Good afternoon. I'd like to call this Thursday, February 15th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order where we'll be interviewing candidates for our open board seat. But first, we'll start with a roll call.
President Cobb?
Oh, wait, we don't have a roll call.
I guess we don't.
I will pause on the roll call.
You're off here.
We'll start, though, with the flag salute. So please join me in rising for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, may I suggest, just for the record, if anyone comes back, that we do have a roll call and it's on the record that we were all present?
That's, yeah, we'll do that, just for the record.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Roll call, then, for the record. President Cobb?
Here.
Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
Director Heinz?
Here.
All present.
Okay. Well, then, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three: Candidate Interviews. So this afternoon, we'll be conducting interviews with the finalists for the open board seat. During our February 8th, 2018, meeting, we identified six candidates to interview. One of those candidates has since recused himself due to concerns about possible conflict of interest. So today, we'll be interviewing the remaining five candidates in alphabetical order. And those candidates include Rosie Ayala, Arthur Banks, Tracy Kelly, Enrique Leon, and Solja Warnick. So we've notified the candidates that it's our preference for them to wait outside this room until their interview time. And we have allotted 20 minutes for each interview. And in addition to answering a question from each board member, the candidates who have, will have been asked to prepare a three-minute statement describing what, why they want to serve on the board, the major strengths of the district, and what they think our priority should be for the 2018-2020 time period. And this afternoon, we'll begin with our first interview, Ms. Rosie Ayala. And our, Tanya Beatty, will be escorting Ms. Ayala in.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. We want to welcome you to this process. My name's Andrea Cobb. I'm the president of the school board this year. I think we've met before, but you look familiar. And I'd like to allow the rest of the board members to introduce themselves.
Karen Viall, vice president of the board.
And Debbie Winskill.
And Scott Heinz.
Good to meet you all. So this afternoon, we've allotted approximately 20 minutes for your interview. We have a timekeeper that's right behind you, so you can't see it, but I'll give you a heads up when we get closer to the end of your time, just so that we can allow a fair, equal amount for every candidate. We'll start with your prepared three-minute statement, and then each of the board members will follow up with a question to you. And then, at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask us questions. So just to keep on schedule, I think you should shoot for around three minutes or so for each of your answers. And at the end, we'll provide you, again, with an opportunity to ask us things. So we can get started unless you have questions with your three-minute statement.
Sure. So I'm ready to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you all for having me and moving me forward to the interview process. I only have three minutes, so I'd like to get started. The first question, why I'd like to serve on the board. I have been part of the education system my entire career, from K-12 to the collegiate level. I've done work with career and job training skills and life skills, and I see education policy and program design definitely as priorities for my future, as a current practitioner, but also all around. This is driven by my own personal experience with education and what I've witnessed with the K-12 system and our college students. My values are shared by the district, students first, flexible, continuous improvement, and effective leadership, just to name a few. I bring with me a practitioner's eye, which is valuable in policy implementation dialogue. And my strengths focus on leveraging collective strengths in order to work through challenges, which takes me to my next point, two strengths of the district. The first, leadership. I feel that the district at every level has strong leadership, starting with the board down to the classroom. There are sets of people at every school, every building, where students can find accessibility, find support, and tenacious efforts, where they are heard, seen, and understood. We have some exceptionally bright minds in our district, and leadership makes for effective and great progress that we're definitely proud of. The second is creativity. It's a difficult task to fulfill requirements and make work engaging, and I think TPS does a great job at being creative with partnerships, especially within the community and within the district. This is also true with initiatives such as the Whole Child Initiative. And making this a priority demonstrates the district's stance behind building a whole child. And it keeps Tacoma relevant and at the forefront, and it's definitely something to be proud of. And lastly, what I feel the district's priorities should be for 18 to 20, I believe, parent engagement of ELL students is definitely something. I take from my own experience, I am an ELL, I still identify as an ELL student. My parents were engaged up until my language was no longer a barrier, and then they found it problematic when I was translating for my teachers during parent-teacher conferences. And they went as far as saying that they would not attend conferences anymore when they could ask me questions. And so I think it's very important to maintain engagement of our parents even under changing circumstances of the students. And I was a really great student overall, but I didn't know, didn't know how to navigate the system up until I joined Avid in high school. Our school system had counselors designed for Avid students. Our counselor spoke Spanish, and my parents re-engaged. And that allowed for me to have a better relationship with my teachers, for my parents to have a better relationship, for my younger sibling to continue through the process, and do a lot better than I did. And I think that we have family engagement coordinators placed around town, and they're doing great, exceptional work. And with that, we can implement this district-wide, both in communication and within partnerships.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're going to ask you questions in order that we're sitting.
Oh.
So I'll start with myself.
Sure.
And so, can you describe for us what you believe educational equity means, and how you think you can further education equity in our district?
Equity, I feel that depends on the student. Every student has their own story. I mentioned in my application process, students whose families work overnight positions, and they are chronically late to their first and second period of classes every morning. And so, what can the district do to work with teachers, to work with families, to work with students, to make this a better experience for the student, and create dialogue amongst the school, knowing that this might not be something that the student may want to talk about? So even starting with conversations when we see something is off, and not assuming that is a student's fault in any way.
Thank you.
My turn? Okay. Please describe what professional experience you have that will prepare you for service as a Tacoma Public School Board member?
My experience is really, I identify as a practitioner and very proudly do so. I have worked with little young ones up until they're 24, 25-plus. I've seen them through job and career attainment. And I think more than anything, in a board position, as policies are implemented, the perspective I bring is really, how, how is this going to work out on the ground level, and really work through issues that may come up from a higher level?
Thank you.
So my question is about time commitment. Now, we have two regular board meetings on Thursdays and one study session, so three Thursdays a month. There's a commitment for that. But we also have other things during the day, weekend events. And I just wondered about availability, and if you have a flexible, somewhat flexible schedule that you could do some of those things.
Absolutely. I have a very supportive employer. They know about me pursuing this. The things that I do outside of my regular employment, that is the Tacoma Arts Commission, they are also flexible in how I can, quote-unquote, "make up" meetings if it does interfere with those meetings. And everything else really is time management.
Thank you.
So as you have acknowledged, public policy and the setting of public policy is one of the primary responsibility of the school board. Would you elaborate on experience you've had with public policy, and more specifically, how you've engaged a variety of constituencies to formulate or to think through public policy?
Right. So part of what I do, especially with working with high schoolers, is advocacy, self-advocacy. So through previous work that I've done with the TRIO program, which is a federal education access program, we work with students to create statements and testimonies about different laws that come up. TRIO is always on the chopping block for funding. And so, we, we help support through testimonies, through our own work, and really through explaining what policy means to parents and to families. So whittling that down to a palpable level.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gone through this pretty quickly with our questions.
Oh, wow.
But you have this opportunity to ask us questions. Do you have questions for the, for us?
Yes, absolutely. What do you, from a board level, what do you feel is one of the biggest challenges that the board faces working from year to year?
Does anyone want to start?
Go ahead. Probably financial is making sure that the dollars are there, both from the state, the federal, and local, and making sure that those dollars fit our strategic plan and our budgeting by priorities and our benchmarks, being mindful of the financial condition of the district. And I think you cannot go out and making sure that programs that we do start are sustainable. I have a little experience from TRIO going back long before you were born. It's always been on the chopping block, but looking at things like making sure if we start something, that we don't stop in midstream because we didn't think, think forward. And in my mind, that's probably, I always look, can we do this from that perspective? Others may have a different perspective.
Yeah, certainly, the funding, and particularly in this McClary age, and connected to that, the state legislature primarily passing new laws and setting new expectations, they tend to tinker and goalposts get moved. And you have to commit to the implementation and sustainment of programs. And oftentimes, before you've fully implemented, there's a new goal, there's a new outcome that's trying to be achieved. So trying to maintain, and you got to be able to push back against those political decisions to advocate on behalf of the students in the district.
I think a challenge is always, from a policy standpoint, thinking about the balance between policy that provides enough structure to ensure that the vision that we've established and the strategic goals that we've set are being met, but then there's enough flexibility still for folks in buildings to innovate and do the things that they need to do to meet every student's needs. So figuring out that balance between the policy structure that provides still the budget, the resources, and the flexibility at the building level for people to work with students and their families to meet their needs.
And I'll just say, mine is school achievement, and also what motivates students, because especially boys, we see sometimes they don't like school. And so, what is the hook that we can get to get them engaged? So I think that's really important.
What would you consider, thinking down to 2020, the year 2020, successes that you would like the district to achieve in the next couple of years?
Thanks, Tori. And I want to keep, I want the achievement gap needles to keep moving, so that we are, you know, all of our kids are achieving at the same level. And that's what I would like to see. I would also like to see us fully funded, so that we're not playing the roulette game that we are now and worried about that. But the main thing for me is to making sure that not only are the achievement gap at the high school levels moving, moving forward, but also that the elementary levels, we still have issues with third-grade reading, focusing on academic achievement at the same time making sure that the Whole Child Initiative is melded with that, so that both of them move parallel and together, if that makes sense.
I would see more equitable and effective discipline, getting away from historical disproportionality of suspensions, and, and trying to come up with, to continue to come up with 21st century interventions that teach kids about problem-solving and conflict resolution, and so restorative justice-type practices.
For me, one of my priorities is around the family engagement and the continued work of our family and community engagement leaders, all the family liaisons, and just more consistency in the level of engagement across our different buildings, and that all families feel like they know who to contact, how to be engaged, how to, in the ways that they can. And so, that, to me, is a priority, continuing to create opportunities across the district for families to be engaged in various ways. Do you have other questions for us?
No, that would be it.
Thank you.
Well, we want to thank you for your time and for being here. We'll be selecting a candidate to, on our 20, I can't, my mind. There's a lot of words on this paper. So we'll be selecting a candidate in our meeting on February 22nd. And so, you'll be hearing from us then.
Wonderful.
So we want to thank you again.
Thank you for wanting to serve our kids.
Absolutely.
So we'll take a five-minute break as we transition to our next candidate.
So we're going to transition to our next interview. So we want to welcome Dr. Arthur Banks for our, as our second candidate. Welcome, Dr. Banks.
Thank you.
My name's Andrea Cobb, and I'm the president of the Tacoma School Board. And I'd like to offer my colleagues a chance to introduce themselves to you.
Karen Viall, vice president of the school board.
Debbie Winskill.
Scott Heinz.
And Renee Trueblood, general counsel.
Mr. Banks, we've scheduled approximately 20 minutes for your interview, and we'll start with your prepared three-minute statement. Then each of the board members has an opportunity to ask you a question, and the same question will be used for each of our candidates. And as a guide to help keep us on schedule, you should allow for about three minutes to answer each question. At the end, we'll have an opportunity to, you will have an opportunity to ask the board a question. So do you have any questions before we get started? Okay. Well, you can go ahead and begin with your statement.
President Cobb, members of the school board, superintendent Sartor, in her absence. I am Dr. Arthur Banks. I'm a 35-year resident of the city of Tacoma, and 20-year resident of the east side of Tacoma. Husband of Jacqueline, and for 43 years, I am the father of four children, whom all graduated from Tacoma Public Schools, two from Falls, the other two from Lincoln and Stadium. They have, they are productive, successful students and citizens because of the educational foundation they received in Tacoma Public School District. I have been an advocate for children's education for over 30 years as a pastor at the Eastside Baptist Church. Prior to that, I worked with Tacoma Urban League. It was a time of partnering with the Tacoma School District in the dropout retrieval program. This program allowed suspended students to continue their educational learning and return to Tacoma Public Schools after their suspension and receive academic credit for their work completed. I am seeking position two to serve on the board because I want to give back into a school system that has educated my four children and the majority of the children in my congregation. They have become productive citizens based on the educational foundation provided by Tacoma Public School System. One of my children has returned to Tacoma and is currently employed as a teacher in the Tacoma School District. I believe one of the two major strengths of the Tacoma School District are two and one, teachers and administrators. The teachers have a heart for the students and a sincere desire to see them be successful. The administrative and school board helps provide tools necessary for teachers to be successful in educating our students. Both are working together to ensure that disparities and barriers that hinder the learning of any students are removed. The second part of that strength is the community that I believe, that believe in education and support the Tacoma Public School District goal and mission, as proven in the passage of the latest Levitt. The district's greatest priority should be to continue to educate students, challenge them to be productive and academically equipped for their future endeavors, and to administer fairly and justly to all students regardless of sex, race, creed, or color. To accomplish this, we must ensure that safety practices, policies, and procedures are in place to protect our students. They must not live in an environment of fear. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll ask you our questions in order, so starting with me. Can you tell us what you believe educational equity means, and how do you think we can further education equity in our district?
I believe education equity is that all students, regardless of economic, race, creed, are afforded the same opportunity to achieve their economic, I mean, their educational goals, which in turn will help them establish their economics as they go forward. And so, that's it.
Well, the second part of that was, how do you think we can further education equity?
I think by providing greater opportunities for innovation that reaches the students that all children learn differently. So I think that in order to provide that equity, we have to be able to reach out and get innovative programs, like you already started, to be able to reach every kid at their learning level and learning style.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Banks, my question is, what professional experience you've had that will prepare you for service as a member of the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors?
Okay. I've been on several boards and commissions, currently serve on the Tacoma Housing Authority Commission, been on that board for the past 10 years. Also, I've served on other boards as well, in which we have opportunity to shape and further the lifestyle and the style of independence, particularly low income. I've been pastoring at Eastside Baptist Church for 30 years, which brings a lot of opportunities to do outreach in the community and outside of the community.
Thank you.
Okay, so my question is about time commitment. So we have three meetings a month. We have two regular board meetings and one study session, so they're the second, third, and fourth Thursday in the evening. But we also have other things that come up during the day and sometimes on weekends. And I want to know about if you have flexibility in your schedule to do some of those other things.
I do have flexibility in my schedule. Having been there for 30 years, I have a lot of flexibility and to do those things as necessary, because I come with the full support of our congregation, who is my employer. But also, we can, we can adjust almost anything. There are some things I can't adjust.
Except for Sundays, sir.
Except for Sunday, and I don't think the school board meets on Sunday.
No.
Not yet, anyway.
Always the first.
So setting public policy is one of the top priorities and responsibilities of the school board. Would you please share with us your experience with public policy, and also how you have or how you would engage different constituencies to create effective public policy?
I think public policy setting is a major concern, because most policies set without the public, they're told what the policy's going to be. But I think having some input from the public and letting them know the direction that the school board would like to go in. We set policy at the small business incubator, as well as at the housing authority. But it is a collaboration of the persons that are involved and that are impacted by those policies, and they have a voice. And once that voice is heard, I think that people are more receptive of receiving those type policies, rather than having those policies saying, "This is a policy, live with it."
Thank you.
We flew through that. That's the extent of our questions for you. But do you have questions for us as members of the board?
I really don't. I wasn't expected to. And I don't have time to make any notes. But I do have one, I guess. How do we, how does the board expect to continue the rapid graduation rate without stopping the dropout rate?
You want me to take a shot at that? Well, I think how we're going to continue it is to address both of them, like we have been doing with the intervention and the innovation that you mentioned, like the extended days at Lincoln and Falls is reorganized, where they have, where they call it seminar in the mornings, where the kids that are behind, they can go to math, they can go to English. And also, just being with our benchmarking and our data collection, using, for example, the number of kids failing a class in ninth grade. That's a pretty good indication of a potential not being able to graduate. The other thing is, we're looking at moving down to the middle school, which is where a lot of the issues start, and really working hard with all of our schools, for example, being Avid schools, so that our kids, when they get out of eighth grade, they're ready to go to high school and succeed. Pretty much doing what we're doing, and just basically laser focusing in on, okay, who are, you know, this is the hard work, I will be honest with you now, on that rapid, and how do we get those kids across that stage with that diploma? So it's a number-one priority. It's going to be just like we've done before. As someone asked me how to school Tacoma to do what they do, and I say, "We use a common sense approach. We put a child in front of us, and we figure out what that child needs." And what you said, teachers and administrators. So it'll be just doing more of what we have been doing, and really drilling down into what kids are in that, in that cohort that is going, it may be, maybe at risk of dropping out. That's best I can do.
Does anyone else have a response?
I would agree with that, and just add, continuing to work with the community to provide wraparound services. So we've gotten a lot better at being receptive to people in the community, groups in the community coming in to help assist with those needs. It's no longer cab as an insular environment, but that invitation to the community to come in and to tell us to identify gaps and barriers, and then also then to be a part of the solution. It's been very effective, and there's room for growth.
And I would just echo what Director Viall and Heinz are saying. And I think a really strong example of the continued partnership is partnerships that we created with the Asian Pacific Cultural Center. When we received our last benchmark report on our graduation rates and looked at the appendix at the dropout rates by, by year in high school, there was one student in our Asian, in our Pacific Islander subgroup, only one dropout across those all four years, and I just- And I just imagine that Laura Pritchard knows that story. So I think to continue partnerships, and we've seen success with that, and I think we just have to do more. You have any other questions for us?
No.
Okay, well, we want to thank you for taking the time and for being interested in this role. It's, it's important in the community, so we appreciate you coming down and for applying. So thank you. We'll be, I should say, the script. We will be selecting the candidate to appoint to the board on February twenty-second, and so you should be hearing from us around that time. And we just want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
We'll take another five-minute break as we transition candidates.
Stand up. Yeah, I saw her.
Okay, we're going to transition to our next interview.
This is quite fascinating.
We want to welcome Ms. Tracy Kelly to this interview. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
My name's Andrea Cobb and I'm the president of the board this year, and we'll start by each introducing ourselves.
I'm Karen Viall, vice president of the school board.
Debbie Wenskill.
Scott Heinz.
And I'm Renee TruBud, I'm the general counsel to the board.
And just as a reminder, I want to remind everyone that we are recording, so we got to get close to the mics. They came and adjusted us a little bit, so remember speaking to the microphone. So this afternoon, we've reserved approximately twenty minutes for your interview, and we'll start with your prepared three-minute statement, then each of the board members has a question that we'll ask you, and we'll just go down the line and ask our questions. So the same questions will be used for each candidate, and as a guide to keep you on schedule, you should shoot for approximately three minutes for each answer, and you do have a timekeeper that'll be going up there so you can check to see where you are. And at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask us questions. Do you have any questions before we get started?
No.
Okay, then you can go ahead and start with your statement.
Sure. So I actually did this kind of in the order that you ask the questions, so it may not flow exactly as a single unit. But the reason why I would like to join the Tacoma Public School Board is because I have a real passion for making sure that youth have a voice. And I was a part of Safe Streets, and they have a program called Youth Leading Change where they do a lot of great things in the schools, but my favorite thing was when we got to go to Olympia with the youth and they were able to advocate with senators and representatives, and I could see the youth start to feel like, "I have a voice. I can express myself, and what I have to say matters to these people." And I just, I found it so exciting to be a part of a process by which students discovered that what they had to say and their input mattered, and I, that's what I would like to bring to the school board. The two major strengths of the school board that I see are innovation, I think being an innovative school district, and being able to find such creative partnerships in our community is a real asset, and I think that it makes our educational quality better. And so I'm very excited to be a part of that. I know my children have benefited from that, and I, I think that the opportunities that we give to youth that can't necessarily be part of a traditional process is a real asset. And the second strength that I see is the positive behavioral supports. I think it's such an amazing thing that it's a cross-district effort, and so because we see such high rates of children who don't continue in the same school, but that they are in similar areas, that those positive behavioral supports transfer across schools and that when they move, they have the same expectations and the same support system. I think it's really beneficial. So those are the strengths that I see to our school system. As far as the district's priorities for 2018 to 2020, you have a great strategic plan, and I, in going through it, feel like the places that I have the strongest interest would be in building community and communication with our families. I think that is such an ongoing process, and it's, it's always a challenge to figure out how to connect best with families that are really busy. So I want to focus on positive behavioral supports and see how we can get more engagement with our families. And then I really think that the focus that we've had on eliminating disparities in our community is, is something we need to continue to focus on. We've made some great strides, but keeping that as the focus and making sure that we continue to have those assessments from early childhood education all the way through graduation, I think is really important.
Thank you. So starting with my question, can you tell us what you believe educational equity means and how you think that the district can further education equity?
So I tend to think of equity itself as being able to support people to the point which they can access the same opportunities. I know everybody's seen the, the three-block metaphor where you talk about.
At the fence.
Yeah, the fence and the difference between equality and equity, and I, I get that. It makes sense. In terms of educational equity, we see that students from different areas and with different family circumstances and from different cultural backgrounds experience our school system differently. And I think that that is something that we need to keep in mind as we move forward and try to develop that educational equity and, and really look at it. And I, I think that goes back to the eliminating educational disparities and what are we looking at in terms of competencies and also in terms of behaviors and supports and how, how we can make the opportunity for a good education accessible to everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. What, Ms. Kelly, what professional experience have you had that you think will prepare you for service as a member of our school board?
Well, my professional background, I worked at the Museum of Glass for about eight years, and a fair amount of that experience was in customer service, which I think that education is partly customer service. You have many different audiences that you need to please and, and many different expectations you need to meet. Then I went on to Safe Streets, which, as I mentioned earlier, has a youth program, and they are a partner with the school district. So I came to understand some of how the school district works and what makes a successful youth program. So I think that that would really help inform my work on the school board. As the executive director at Catherine Place, I, I work with women in our community, and I see the impact that a good education can make on families and what a difference that makes from a really early age all the way through. So I think that that would be helpful. And I have served on a couple of different boards, am currently serving on some boards, so I have experience with the process and Robert's roles and all the boring stuff that goes along with it.
Thank you.
So my question has to do with time commitment. So we have three, three meetings a month, so two regular meetings and one study session. So it's the second, third, and fourth Thursdays of the month. But there are other things that come up during the week, during the day, other evenings and weekends, and want to know if you have any kind of flexibility in your schedule and if you could accommodate that.
I do have a moderately flexible schedule. I mean, I want to be transparent and say I want to do a lot of different things in the community, and I can't always do everything that I would like to, but I think this is important. I applied because I, I think it's something that I need to make time for, and so I would work to meet all of the meetings and also to go out into the community and be an ambassador.
Thank you.
Setting public policy is one of the top priorities and responsibilities of the school board. Would you share with us your experience with public policy and how you have or would work with different constituencies that might have different viewpoints as you create public policy?
Yes. So as a member of the Tacoma Arts Commission, I've worked with the ordinance for the arts in the city of Tacoma, so I have experience reading that kind of legal documentation and discussing what the implications are on policy. And I also am on the new Tacoma Neighborhood Council, so working through the Neighborhood Council and communicating neighborhood issues to the city council is something I'm familiar with doing. Meeting with community members who have specific interests is something that I have done, and I think that, as I, as I mentioned earlier, it's, it's always really challenging to communicate with people who have families and are busy, but I think it's, it's the most important thing to make sure that those communication lines are open and that, that you're able to have an ongoing conversation so that when issues come up, it's, it's not establishing something, it's just continuing the conversation.
So that is all of our questions for you, but do you have any questions for us as members of the board?
I do. I, I would like to know what you consider to be the most pressing issues for the remainder of your strategic plan period for the 2018 to 2020.
Does anyone want to start?
Sure. I think just continuing to move all of our children forward academically and socially and emotionally, working on the disparate discipline issues, which we have been able to make some real headway, and also continuing to close the gaps at not just the high school level, but also throughout the district. I think also continuing, being able to continue our free preschool program, universal free preschool, and I say continue because I think one of the really critical issues to us being able to do the work at the level we've been doing is to make sure that we're getting adequate funding out of Olympia, and right now we're not. And I think we'll continue, you know, to work on that. The other thing that, that will sometimes, you know, it'll allow us to still be creative and innovative and figure out how to do that, but to me, it's to continue what we're doing, addressing the needs of each child in this district and making sure that each one of them's getting what they need to walk across that stage with a diploma. And that is, you know, our, our strategic plan really makes that clear, and it's going to take all of us. So I guess we'll have an opportunity, I think, to be a little more creative and innovative. But to me, that's the main, the main goal for me is to see that move forward or continue to move forward.
Thank you. Any one else?
I would add funding in this McClery age and the uncertainty of what constitutes basic education and how we can use levy dollars and how much levy we can collect. There's still a lot of clarification that needs to be done that has direct impact on our kids and the types of programs that we've been able to offer that has led to some of the gains in closing of gaps that we've experienced.
For me, my priority is similar to some of the things that you've said. It's just in the work that we're doing, continuing to find ways to engage all of our families as partners in working towards meeting the needs of every child and continuing to partner with the community to make sure that kids have opportunities to learn in multiple places, whether it's in the Boys and Girls Club after school or in a program through Metro Parks, just continuing to make what we, what happens during the school day resonate with what's happening at home and what's happening in the community for kids too, so that all those places are supportive for them long-term. Do you have other questions for us?
Not right now.
Okay, well, we just want to thank you for your interest in serving, for applying and for spending your time with us today. So we'll be selecting a candidate to appoint to the board on February twenty-second, so you should expect to hear from us around that time. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And we'll take a five-minute break while we transition to the next candidate. So we're going to transition to our next interview. We will welcome Mr. Enrique Leon to the, to this. I don't know what to call it. Yes, but please, you're welcome.
Welcome.
Charter table.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, welcome. My name's Andrea Cobb and I'm the president of the board this year. So we'll start by going down the line and each of us introducing ourselves to you.
I'm Karen Viall, I'm vice president of the board.
I'm Debbie Wenskill.
Scott Heinz.
I'm Renee TruBud, I'm the counsel to the board.
So Mr. Leon, this afternoon, we've scheduled about twenty minutes for your interview, and we'll start with your prepared three-minute statement, and then each of the board members will ask you one question. The same question is being used with each candidate for consistency, and as a guide, we'd ask you to allow for about three minutes for each answer, just to keep within the time window, and then at the end of the time period, you'll have an opportunity to ask us questions. So do you have any questions before we start?
No, thank you.
So you can go ahead and begin with your statement, and there's a timekeeper right in front of you, so to keep you on track.
Okay, great. So I'm applying to the board in order to help continue the success that the board has already been enjoying with the Tacoma Public Schools. In answering, just going right to your initial questions that you asked of us, two of the highlights that are already successes, I feel like are the graduation rate going from seventy to eighty-six percent over the past four or five years. Also, your improved preschool enrollment rate has gone up significantly by fifty-five percent. Future-focused areas that are already being worked on by, by you as a board and the whole district. The effectiveness of your partnerships with community, liaisons, universities, businesses, I think is a wonderful thing and should continue. And also, you're, you've been decreasing your in, your out-of-school suspension rates, and I think that's also something to focus in more on. My skill set would complement those present on the board in maintaining the stable course the district is already on. I support your mission, partnership with parents, community, providing the comprehensive and rigorous and individualized education that you give to your students here. My passion lies in building healthy communities. That's why I went into medicine. In addition to that, equitable societies are really important. That's why I teach medical students and residents to go into underserved parts of the country and our, in our state also. Tacoma Public Schools does excellent work in focusing on the social and emotional development health of your, of your students. I think that, you know, the intelligent quotient that young people have as they become adults is really a key for their success in life. Healthy societies start with healthy people, but a medical system only has a little tiny percentage of imparting health on, on the society. There's something we, we're working on at Tacoma Family Medicine, we said our work around determinants of health, the social determinants of health, and I think one of the most important parts of that is education. So if we have strong education in our community, we're really, we're going to have a healthier community. There's some comments I'd like to add in addition to what you already have in my written statement, but as a Latino, Proven American, immigrated here in the third grade, I had to learn English in the ESOL class, is what they called it then, back on the East Coast. So I was given a great education by my teachers in public education. Both my parents were teachers, my wife was a high school math teacher. She's now a high school counselor. Fortunate and happy to have my two children and a couple of public schools, and they flourished here, so I'd like to help continue that, that tradition into the future. I also work as part of my other duties I've taken on as an assistant and board member to UDEP Tacoma, Global Honors Program, so I mentor students there. I also have a little brother that, an eight-year-old that I, through Big Brothers Program, who will not see his father until he's eighteen because he's incarcerated. So these experiences in my background allow me to really understand and, and give strong weight to education in our community. Whole work as a family medicine doc, I've also, under my leadership at my residency, I've been able to implement some difficult but worthwhile simulation centers and also bedside ultrasound training programs. I used to work at Community Healthcare at the Eastside Tambera Clinic in Salashan for about twelve years, and while I was there, I was, gained a lot of experience in fundraising, coalition building with communities in order to try to get the, and successfully got the Hope Six grant and the group effort with HUD and the whole, the whole community, and that did a great deal of service for that, for that group. I'm still connected to that community in many ways, from, many of my patients follow me over to my Hilltop Clinic where I work now, by TG, and I, one of my great joys in life is bringing, bringing my residents out to. joys in life is bringing, bringing my residents out to do my sideline team physician work that I do at Lincoln High School and at Stadium now. I also take my residents out, and we do free physicals for the kids at, um, First Creek Middle School. So a little bit in summary, I feel confident in my ability to connect with people, politicians if necessary, while advocating for the board's goals. I look forward to continuing the current vision of the board, your strategic plan, educational programs, um, the district's core values of exceeding academic standards, accountability, uh, your community partnerships that you already have going, and the needs, emotional needs of your students. So I'm ready to, really excited to help the board and administration in any way that you see fit, if I'm chosen for this position.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll just ask our questions in order.
Sure.
So my first question to you is, what do you believe educational equity means, and how do you think we can further educational equity in our district?
So equity, uh, to me means really the high level of education is brought to every single member of, of the society, no one should left, be left behind. So that could be technology, the, um, the training of the, of the teachers, the physical plant, the support they get, um, every child deserves that same support, no matter what area code they're living in.
Thank you.
Thank you. My question is, and you've somewhat touched on it, is, uh, is it, it's Leon, correct?
Leon, yeah.
Not Leon, yeah.
Sure.
Mi español es, mi pobre. What professional experience have you had that you think will prepare you for service as a Tacoma Public School Board Member?
So I've been able to both really appreciate the power of education through not only my education, but seeing my children's education, and also, uh, it's a critical thing that I work on when I see my patients, um, I, I always ask them about how school is going and if there's issues there, I've been advocating for them in many ways, whether it's a 504 or calling teachers or principals to advocate for special needs they may have had, um, so that's one way. Um, in addition to that, I think coalition building, working outside your normal structure, whether it be just my, my partners at work and the nurses and technicians and other healthcare professionals, uh, there comes a role in really just kind of stepping outside of that, advocating for your community, um, and I've done it in public health realms, um, and also at Community Healthcare with the HOPE6 grant work.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, my question has to do with, um, availability, so we have three meetings a month, so two regular meetings and one study session, so it's the second, third, and fourth Thursday of the month, and, but there are also things that happen during the day sometimes and on the weekends, and we'd, we'd be interested in knowing your flexibility, if you have some flexibility in your schedule to do things like that?
Yes, I do, so, um, I'm, I'm not a full-time physician anymore, I've taken, I've gone down to point eight-five, so I have some time built in for me to do public service for the community, and this is one of the ways I'd like to have that happen. You know, my schedule gets made out about three months in advance at work, um, and I'd be able to request, you know, all Thursdays not being on call, that type of thing. We do take overnight call, um, and weekends at times.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but I have the support of my, my, my partners.
Public policy is one of the most important responsibilities that we have as school board members. Would you share with us your experience working on public policy issues, and how you have or how you would engage with different stakeholders that might have difference of opinion around the public policy that you're working to form?
Sure. Um, so I've worked on a few things, homelessness, poverty, and also one of the most recent things I've been working on, actually for a long period of time, but more intensely has been, um, public health around gun injury prevention. So it's a difficult topic because it's emotionally charged, where some people in society feel like it's, um, when we talk about preventing gun deaths, they feel like people are trying to take their guns away on the Second Amendment issue, but really, being able to diffuse that and talk about it from a public health perspective has been a powerful and a moving experience for me, as I've gone to, um, down to Olympia, I've spoken, I've spoken in DC, talked to the Washington Academy of Physicians, the Pierce County Academy of Physicians, organizing those coalitions around safe storage, which means locking your weapons, separating the ammunition, talking to parents, making sure they know, they go to other people's, their kids go to people's houses, to make sure they ask those people about unsecured weapons. Really, when you talk about it that way, it allows people not to feel their Second Amendment rights being infringed upon, because we're trying to save lives, and it's, uh, was a difficult issue at first to discuss with people, but when you table it and discuss it in those open terms with regarding, um, not removing someone's right, but really more of them a safety perspective, it's gone quite well. So those are some of the, some of the work I've done.
Right, thank you.
Well, that's the extent of our questions for you, but do you have questions for us as members of the board?
Sure, um, I'd like to know what you might see as kind of the, the next few years, the biggest challenges for both the student population, the teachers, and then the administrators, in your opinions?
I can, I can start, students, teachers, and administrators. I've been all three in education and higher, and are otherwise now on the board, but I think some of the biggest challenges, for me, as we look at it at the district, you know, it's, it's about economics for us in some respects, the poverty level continues to increase in Tacoma, and that's an issue for, for us in terms of equity and academic achievement as we move forward. I, you know, and particularly for, and I think homelessness, about eighteen hundred kids on any given day in Tacoma Public Schools were homeless. And these are the underlying things that, in my opinion, for administrators, uh, having probably, McClery did not fully fund schools, I think we all know that, it's we're going to have to do more with less. We'll be lucky if we maintain where we are now. So it will require our administrators to be, as they are creative, we're one of the most creative and innovative school districts in the country, for us to continue to do that, and I look at those as the underlying factors that we really need to address and be on top of as we, uh, as we move forward in the district, so to continue those successes. And what's going to do is that we're going to have to probably, you know, one of the problems that happens sometimes in government, and I've had experience for, I hate to say over forty, over forty years, is that, uh, we get complacent, we're doing well, but in this district we're not, so it will be that constant looking and adjusting, looking at the, the health issues of the, of the kids in the community clinics, I mean, the Tambera Clinic, when I was teaching at Lister School, was amazing opportunity. So for me, that's what I see, the students, it's going to be poverty, increasing poverty, also we allow, our population is large, so just making sure that we are clearly identifying those factors that are what we call barriers in the district, and making sure that we're trying to remove those barriers so that those kids can reach, achieve that. Same thing, one of the issues for teachers is burnout, and we, um, when you teach in a school district that has the poverty level that we do, and some of the, what we call the ASIS, which I know you are familiar with, with the adverse childhood experiences, it's pretty difficult. And we have created the whole, what we call now the whole educator, to begin to help our teachers better address those things. So I think that's, for our teachers, it's making sure they have professional development, that we take care of them, that I see, and administrators, it's giving them the tools to get that job done that we as a board ask them to do. So that's where I am on that question. Thank you.
Excellent, I appreciate your, um, the work you're doing on burnout prevention, it's something we suffer from a lot in the medical field also.
Yeah, I think any high-stress job, that happens.
Anyone else?
I'd just add, you know, there's been, uh, through the strategic plan and the benchmarks and the budgeting by priorities, with attribution, you can understand why some of the successes have occurred, but as the graduation rate has risen, continuing to name the individual child, so it gets much more difficult to help all kids be successful, and the processes that have helped us get to where we are may not be the same strategies that we need to put in place for, for the kids that are, um, that continue to not make it to graduations. And so for us to not be set in our ways, I, I think that using data and evidence-based practices and being a learning and sharing organization so that we're engaged with other districts and other professionals and other disciplines to help us think differently, to make certain that we are providing that continuum of educational services for all kids.
Wonderful. I appreciate the transparency and especially on your website and talking to other educators in your, in your, um, in the district here. The evidence-based medicine that we practice over the past ten or fifteen years really has made a big difference in people's, uh, decreasing suffering and decreasing costs, but it takes a while to get people to understand that really evidence is pretty important and follow it, but not, not everything falls into the one category of, you know, cookie cutter, this works for everybody just because the evidence says it, you have to have a little bit of personalization too.
I think for me, the challenges that students, teachers, and administrators face are all connected to each other, um, so I was like, okay, where do I start? Students start with administrators, so then I'm like, I think it starts in the middle for me with teachers, and I think some of the challenges that they face are related to managing lots of change, both in the context of expectations of their roles, and the standards and assessments and the policy at the district, um, state level, federal, like just managing through lots of new initiatives and change, especially for our educators who have been in the system for a period of, a long period of time, there's just been lots of waves of changes and, from all different directions. And then related to that too, for educators in the classroom, some of the same things that Director Viall and Director Hines alluded to, just the experiences that students, um, have in life, and being able to find ways to meet the needs of every student, regardless of how they're entering and the level of readiness to engage academically, and being able to manage that and the needs of students. And then for students, just managing this, I think for all of us, we didn't grow up in the same level, in a society at the same level of connectedness as kids are experiencing now. We used to be able to go home at the end of the day and break from our peers who might have gotten on our nerves or who, like, who we really wanted to be around, but it's not the same context anymore with cell phones, social media, kids are in each other's faces all day long, so just managing different kind of level of connectedness and what that means for them as kids, and being able to feel confident and just feeling like whole. And so I think that's a challenge for kids too, and then going up to edu, administrators, I think they're kind of trying to manage the same changes in many ways that teachers are trying to manage, but I think for them, the challenge is figuring out how to create systems that enable the work in buildings. Think more and more, especially in our context, as we get closer to the goals that we've established for graduation and other measures of achievement, the greater the need for systems that help to facilitate, um, consistency in those outcomes over time. So I think that, again, they're all connected, but I think just managing through changes and sustainability and some of the things that were already shared about managing that without burning out or without figuring out and managed stress through it all, I think they're all connected and some of the things that individuals in the system are experiencing at all levels of student, teacher, and administrator.
You have a?
You meant, I'm just going to comment, you mentioned the adverse childhood events, and it's one of the places we cross over in medicine and education.
Oh, absolutely.
If we understand what those are, we, we, we've started to, um, to really investigate that at our, at our institution, and we're finding that when we ask those questions, they're tough questions, sometimes people don't want to open the Pandora's Box and ask it, but when you do, you really understand your patient or your student better, and you can serve them better, and you know what those needs are, so those, those, you know, six, fourteen percent that aren't graduating, you can get, make a bigger impact on those, on those people.
Do you have other questions for us?
I don't, thank you.
Well, we just want to thank you for your interest in the role and for being willing to spend some time with us today. Um, the board will be selecting a candidate to appoint to the board on February 22nd, so you should be hearing from us around then.
Okay.
We just want to thank you again.
Thank you very much for your service and your time.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break as we transition candidates.
We're going to transition to our next interview.
Is this, oh, it was, uh, Dr. Leon. Yeah, I just appreciate his work on kind control after losing those two family members a year ago. Yeah, that was horrible, still is horrible, I can't even think about it.
Board, we'd like to welcome Ms. Solja Wornik up to the table. Hello, have a seat. Welcome.
Welcome.
Well, welcome, my name's Andrea Cobb, and I'm the President of the Board this year, and we'll just get started by each introducing ourselves to you.
Hi, Karen Viall, Vice President of the Board. Debbie Winskill.
Scott Hines.
I'm Renee Trubat, the General Counsel to the Board.
Thank you.
So this afternoon, we've scheduled approximately twenty minutes for your interview, and we'll start with your prepared three-minute statement, but then each of the board members will have one question for you. Um, the same question's being used for all candidates to be consistent, and as a guide for time, we'll, we'd ask you to reserve about three minutes for each question, just so you don't run out of time, and at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask us questions. So, do you have any questions before we get started? Okay, well, then, we can begin with your three-minute statement. Oh, and we'd ask that you speak into the microphone just because we are recording.
Uh-huh.
You're on.
You're on.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thank you for inviting me to interview for this. My name is Solja Wornik, uh, I'll give you a little background of myself. I was a schoolteacher for thirty years, I taught, uh, all different levels, elementary, middle, and college. I also served the many board in the community, I was multi-care foundation board for nine years, I was also foundation for Tacoma Student for six years, and I was appointed, uh, by Governor as a Commissioner for the Asian American Affairs, and also I was think tank member for, uh, education in Washington State. And I, you asked two other questions there, it's just, uh, what would be the Tacoma School District, uh, strengths? I'll say Tacoma School District is very innovative, and I think no school, no two school in Tacoma is the same, in elementary and middle, and you see all the high school special, uh, innovative high school, like a semi sort of idea, and, um, I just, we even have the, you know, Department for the Global Education, I really appreciate that too. Uh, and, uh, and a second, uh, strength would be, I would say, uh, strong community partnership. When I was in the foundation board, uh, foundation board for Tacoma Student, I, I saw that such a, um, community really want to help, I mean, you, uh, so, we have, we can expand more, but I think that's one strong, uh, our strengths. Uh, three priorities, uh, I would prioritize, um, early learning, you know, there is a saying that everything you need to, uh, to learn in life, learned in kindergarten, and by third grade, I want all the students to be in strong position in reading, math, writing, and even good citizenship skill. Second, uh, priority would be, um, I really like to see that refining, um, the whole child initiative, you, what the district is doing. We really need the kid to, not just only academic, many other social, emotional need, and, uh, also, um, we need to teach them, each student have to be responsible and, uh, also, um, respectable to others. And the, the last one, I will say, um, sustaining the, our graduation rate, right now it's eighty-six point. If we, um, go five percent every year, by 2020, we will be hundred-one point. point. So, so I think with a very dedicated board, and the great leadership of our superintendent, Carla Santoro, I think we can make a dream school district. Thank you.
So I'll start with my question, and then we'll just go down in line. So can you tell me what you believe educational equity means, and how do you think we can further educational equity in our district?
I think equity means just, not just only helping the, you know, the student, is low-achieving students. I think equity means all program, all, whole student. You know, there's a gift to the kid, do we have a good gift in the program for the, you know, high achievers? And so it's just all the programs that, that meet all the students' need, not just any particular group. That's equity, I say.
Excuse me, you caught me drinking my water here. Solja, could you please describe what professional experience that you have and have had that would prepare you to serve on the Tacoma School Board?
Well, I was, you know, in the classroom teacher for thirty years, I said. I think I had a very successful, I think, my teaching career. And you will see that I got the Excellent Teachers Award from district. And one thing that I would, I would, I would consider that how discipline the kid, my strong suit was that, I was, long time I taught in middle school. Before you know how to discipline kid, you can't teach anything, you know. So I tried to build lots of relationship, particularly with the trouble kid, and that I have all that experience. And I, I think that also, once that I get, get to the program that I got interested, I put my whole heart into the program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my question has to do with time commitment, and we have three meetings a month, a second and the fourth are regular meeting, and then a study session on the third, the third Thursday. But there's other things that happen during the day, and other evenings, and sometimes on the weekends. And so I don't know about your flexibility in your schedule, and if you're, you know, available to do some of those things.
Yeah. My time is flexible. See, I'm retired now. But, you know, people do what they like to do, spend the time what they like to do, really like to do. So I really think I, this is my passion, education. So I think I will prioritize my time for this.
Thank you. The role of the school board around setting public policy is one of the top priorities. Would you please share with us your experience setting public policy, and how you would or how you have engaged different constituencies in the formation of that policy, people that might have a difference of opinion, how you take that into consideration to formulate the policy?
Yeah. Well, I do have some experience making lots of policy in Korean Women's Association because I was playing a major role there, you know, setting vision and, you know, policies that we need to have. So I, that experience will help me. And, you know, when you make a policy, you have to be, really have to be, you know, equity and different things you have to consider for all different groups.
Thank you. We were pretty quick, we went through our questions. But do you have questions for us as members of the board?
Ah, okay. I'm just wondering how the levy is going. I mean, I was, last night, I heard sixty-three percent. Is it, is it going well?
It's passed. They're not, there's too big a gap now with what's out to catch.
I assume, I think, I had very good feeling. Yesterday, Election Day, I was, I was at the thirtieth Macau Street waving signs.
Oh, sorry.
And my feet was freezing cold. And I just waving, and I'm counting, maybe about ten car, about five, six guys just come up, you know. It just really made me feel good. I had fun, even though it was freezing.
Thank you for that.
Yes, our kids thank you for that. Thank you.
And another, I have a couple of questions. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
We have time.
I know that even though we passed the levy, that this district is, I don't know, it just showed a budget. And can we, can we continue all the program we have? How are we gonna do that?
Well, being kind of the budget person, I guess I can respond to that. Right now, we still have a shortfall because of falling into the dollar fifty per thousand, but we're working on that in Olympia, and we have reason to believe that the legislature is going to at least pass something that will basically hold us harmless for a couple of years, and for them to go back and really take a look about how that happened to us. And it's just traditionally because of Tacoma's low assessed valuation, which we've always had issues with. Like, it takes us three dollars to raise of evaluation, when it takes Seattle fifty cents, the same amount of money. And when, as I put it when I testified the House Ways and Means Committee, we're that square, you know, we're the square peg not fitting in the round hole. And there, where that Senate bill came out, passed the Senate yesterday, which includes a provision to basically hold us where we are. But that doesn't mean it's going to stay there. So after, so we'll, you know, I guess the thing we have to do is to be creative and innovative and figure out how to do more with less, and really sort through the value of each and one of our programs, and make sure that we are funding those that yield the greatest results for those kids that have the greatest needs. And I have confidence that we can do that as a district. We've been doing that through our benchmarking, our strategic plan. So I guess the answer is, you know, we can't say absolutely, but we can say that I think we can do a pretty good job. I mean, State of Washington did back in the Boeing time, and it's just going to be a lot of hard work, and we're not afraid to do that.
So how much we get involved with lobbying to the state as a board members?
Depends. We have Charlie, Charles Brown, who is one of the senior lobbyists in Olympia. He's actually, we call him Governmental Affairs, and he tells us when he wants us there and who he wants, and depending on what the issue is. And we pretty much rely on him, because most of what goes on in Olympia is face-to-face, and he has been lobbying there since nineteen ninety, so he is...
I see.
So that's what we do. I mean, we're not all down there en masse, because it really doesn't do any good. And he will ask who he would like to have, or make phone calls. I know he had Mrs. Santoro make some phone calls this week. So that's what we do. We have, we do have a very strong presence in Olympia, let's put it that way.
Good, thank you, thank you. I hope that we can continue all the program that, find a way to do all the programs that we have. One other question is that, you know, that world is really becoming a global community. I was always dreaming about, oh, why Tacoma School District don't have international school? So I'm just wondering, will the board will entertain that idea of international school, just like we have Sammy and Sola, and, you know, if we can bring the resource from outside district, you know. I was actually talking about the Minan, Dr. Haj that did the last week about it. And so, so anybody is interested in that kind of a project?
I think we got an opportunity to do that through Foss World IB School.
Foss High School?
Well, Foss has the IB, it's called now Foss World IB School.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
So I think there may be an opportunity not to start something new, but perhaps work it through Foss.
That's a good idea, because of Foss.
For my, my thinking.
Foss can use also student population, too, so could be possible.
Might be a way to do that, rather than start a whole new school, looking for space, and, you know, an idea costs quite a bit of money. So that might be an idea, and I'd be willing to look at that.
Thank you, thank you.
And I think we could always think about how we incorporate more international experiences into all of our high school and middle school and programs, just embedding it throughout.
You know, thirty years my teaching, the most memorable thing in my teaching was that, that I studied when I was teaching at the Baker Korean Language, a second language. And it's two thousand, year two thousand. I, I just, all these kids learned Korean for a whole year. And I thought, how nice it would be to take all these kids to actually practice their language and the experience of culture. So I, I just, just made a sister school in Korea, and I was ready to take a twenty-five kid, and all the teachers, or even my principal, would say I was crazy. But, you know, we did fundraising and everything. So we actually made it happen, went to two thousand. And these students, Tacoma students, never been out of in town, but they've been all the way to Korea. And they just had eye-opening experience. And then even they graduate the high school, they come to my school and say, Mrs. Wornik, that was the best experience all my twelve years of, you know, school life. And it makes such an impact to the kid. And so I was so interested in continuing, but I couldn't do every year, but I just managed to do every other year. So we are doing that, and continued every other year. And then after I retired two thousand A, I didn't want that program die out. So I actually helped the kid to raise money. And now I think I just provide some community donations, and then also Korean government donate some. So now the Korean program can go every year now. So, so I, that's, that, that, you know, everything is, it looks like, sometimes it is just very difficult, but when there is will, there is a way to do it.
That's why we value the partnership and other partnerships so greatly, because we know that that's how we get kids opportunities through partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have other questions for us?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We want to thank you for your interest in the role and for coming down and spending time with us.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to be making an appointment decision on our board meeting on February twenty-second, so you'll be hearing from us around then. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. So there are a few more items on our agenda, just to talk through for the purposes of the record. So the board will convene to an executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty, one-ten, one-G, to discuss the qualifications of applicants on Friday, February sixteen, twenty eighteen. And the board anticipates making a recommendation for candidate appointment at our February twenty-second business meeting, with a swearing-in to follow on March eighth, twenty eighteen. And with that, we are adjourned.